Excellent. I'd like to open the November tenth, twenty twenty five Bethel Planning and Zoning meeting, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. And with us this evening.
Okay, Barson, Commissioner.
I am Paul Shanley, the Chairman.
I am Ryan, Commissioner.
Stuart Braden, Commissioner.
Bob Legner, Commissioner.
David Paul and Lenders, Coordinator.
Amanda Martinez, Reporting Secretary.
The, uh, we're expecting Jeremy DeCarly, our interim Town Planner, to join us remotely in a little while. You have prior engagements.
Paul.
Yes, sir.
Before we start, I, I would like to mention why we're meeting on a Monday night instead of a Tuesday night, and that is to celebrate Veterans Day tomorrow, and thank everyone for their service.
You're here.
Yeah. Amanda.
We were just doing our introductions, so.
Thanks for joining the show.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sorry, late, Mr. Chairman, working on the housing bill.
You're fine, you're fine.
Just showed up.
Chatting about that, folks, ourselves before the. Uh, I don't think we have any alternates with us. We do have a forum, so with that being said, uh, we will open up the public hearing for sixty seven Greenwood Property LLC and sixty nine Greenwood Property LLC Site Plan Excavation and Fill Permit. Do you have the public notice?
It's right in front of you.
Perfect, thank you. So if you're October thirty first, twenty twenty five, and November seventh, twenty twenty five, public notice, the Bethel Planning and zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on November tenth, twenty twenty five, in Meeting Room D in the municipal center of One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, at seven P M. to hear the following. Sixty seven Greenwood Property LLC and sixty nine Greenwood Property LLC, the property located at sixty seven dash sixty nine Greenwood Avenue, for three new structures containing a total of eighteen dwelling units. The application consists of a site plan and a special permit for excavation and fill material in excess of a thousand cubic yards. It can be found in the accessories records as map thirty, block forty one, and a lot, and lot twelve, and map thirty, block forty one, and lot thirteen. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. Public may send comments in the regular mail and email to landuse@bethel-cp.gov. Parking for hearing is located in the rear building. Paul Shanley, Chairman. With that. For yours.
Good evening. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office in Bethel at two seventy five Greenwood Avenue. I mean, not stand in front of anybody. Uh, here tonight on the act of sixty seven Greenwood Properties LLC and sixty nine Greenwood Properties LLC. Uh, the LLC is represented here tonight by Tom Tonner, its principal, uh, principal of the LLC that is the principal of the LLC. Um, technically, both entities own both of the parcels. So it's a shared, uh, let's have this conveyed to them. I'd like to submit for the record a copy of the notice I sent to a buddy of property owners. We've only gotten about seven green cards back, uh, out of fifteen, and one was reformed as, uh, undillable. Um, so the two properties we're talking about tonight are sixty seven and sixty nine Greenwood Avenue. Uh, it's got the Google map, the Google map street view up on the screen. Um, property numbers go up as you move west on Greenwood Avenue, so the building on the right.
She's going to say that. Can you mute that, please?
Yes. So the building on the right is sixty seven Greenwood Avenue, and the building on the left is sixty nine Greenwood Avenue. I've been working on this for several months, and I still get them backwards, so I'm sure I'll do it again tonight, but wanted to be clear. Um, the property contains a tiny bit under one acre of land. It's like point nine nine seven, something like that, so it's just under an acre. There are two principal structures, one the cloche property. On sixty seven Greenwood Avenue, the one on the right, there are three one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom unit currently, for a total of four units and five bedrooms. In sixty nine Greenwood Avenue, the one on the left, there are two three-bedroom apartments. So two apartment totals, six bedrooms total, nearly what. Uh, between the two, we currently have six residential units with eleven bedrooms total. The property is located in the Transit Oriented Development Zoning District. If these two parcels are the last two parcels of Greenwood Avenue as you move east. Um, obviously, as you know, the T O D zoning district with your amendments to it allow twenty units per acre. Because we're just under an acre, we can't get to twenty. Uh, and given the parking requirements, the various elevations among the property and the grades, we thought we could only really get eighteen units in on the site. So we propose those eighteen units, uh, three new buildings that will replace the two buildings that are there. So those two will come down, there'll be three new ones. Each new structure will have, uh, one-bedroom apartments with three per floor. So three on the first floor, three on the second floor, um, six units total, six bedrooms total per the, per structure. Uh, it's quite a simple layout. There'll be two across the street frontage, and then one in the back, which we'll obviously get into a lot of detail on. The property is located on Greenwood Avenue, which is a state highway, Route three oh two. As such, our curb cut will require an encroachment permit from DOT District Four. So the state DOT will be reviewing this. They have had some preliminary discussions with our engineers and provided some input which we incorporated into our plans. So we expect that that will be a difficult process. We have engaged Joe Balskus of V H B to prepare a traffic report for the project. Um, I don't know how many of you are here, but Joe did the traffic report for the Bethel Food Market site. He and I have some disagreements about the rate return only, but other than that, Joe does great work. Maura was the architect. I live in the neighborhood, so I'm still, uh, very, very mad about the rate return only. It just doesn't quite work, but Joe is a great traffic engineer. Please bring me out a report. The counts are done, and we'll have that report to you next week and bring it back for the next week to be tested. We've received comment letters from Public Works, from the town's reviewing engineer, the town planner, the intertown planner, and the fire marshal. Um, we're working on incorporating our responses to all these letters into a revised plans, which we hope to have submitted next week, uh, with, with response letters. Uh, our professionals will address the significant comments from those letters if we speak with them tonight, but we wanted to get all your input when we do our first set of revisions and submit that to the commission. Uh, we have not received anything from the Health Department. Is that correct?
If, if that's the case, Mr. Olson, then you did.
Okay, I didn't see it, so.
Oh, we must have asked on October seventeenth.
Uh, well, also, we also went through a review with the village architect, Olivia Potty. Um, we met with her initially, we went through a set of plan revisions, and we're pretty pleased with the letter that she submitted to the commission. Um, I think it's a fairly unconditional endorsement of the architect for the project. So that's all I have to present to start this off. Um, I'd like to start with our professionals, with Maura Nualwan of seventy two Architects in Danbury, the architect on the project. So, Maura, please take your way, and I'll.
Thank you.
I guess I should have moved this down on page.
No, no, I'm going to start on that page.
You're going to start here, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, and sorry for my bad. Um, my name is Maura Nualwan. I'm Principal Architect at seventy two Architects in Danbury. I'm a licensed architect, a state-recognized historic architect, and a building official emeritus in the state of Connecticut. Two architects for the original Grand Apartment Building on Grand Street, and more recently, the Carol Lucy's Wine Spirits New Building, and love working in Bethel, and are excited to be back again. Um, sixty seven and sixty nine Greenwood Avenue are located at the east end of Greenwood, within the Transit Oriented Design District. These homes were built about eighteen forty and have been remodeled and remodeled over the intervening years. House sixty seven has been divided into two three-bedroom apartments, and sixty nine has been cut into three one-bedrooms and one two-bedroom apartment. The buildings have vinyl and aluminum siding, asphalt shingle roofs, replacement windows, and faux shutters. Although these buildings are old, I assert that they are not historically valuable. The U S Department of Interior maintains a list of historically important properties. The National Register of Historic Places includes the Greenwood Avenue Historic District, which extends from Elizabeth Street to P T Barham Square and from School Street to South Street. Twenty-nine individual buildings are identified and called out for their architectural contribution to the historic district. Houses sixty seven and sixty nine are not mentioned. Slide two, is that me there or can you get that? Okay, great. Ooh.
Interesting. We got lost to the gray.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's a future part of our discussion.
That's okay. This is the picture I want.
Oh, it is.
For, for Zoom or not Zoom, but. Uh, the property is at the outer edge of the sidewalkable downtown. The narrow side street, parallel to Greenwood, transitions from the busy intersection to a quiet residential neighborhood at the top of the hill on Prospect Street. You can see in this image in front of house sixty seven that the sidewalk has ended before the sixty seven property, and a charming stone retaining wall extends up along the road. The stone wall runs along the residential properties the length of this side street. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. First, the disclaimer. These renderings are focused on the building design because we're architects, right? So these are a tool we use to communicate our ideas about how the building will look. And technology for these renderings becomes better at helping us communicate our ideas. It also exposes the areas that we're not focusing on, really. So you'll find that the landscaping and the civil engineering and the existing site were a grain of salt because we're looking at the building. So I'll defer, I'll defer to the professional consultants' drawings for the landscape architecture of the civil engineering. So if, um, when we look at these, remember that I'm an architect, so that's what I'm thinking about the building. Um, rather than a single large apartment building, we propose several small-scale townhouse-style buildings. Two buildings along Greenwood have facades designed to face the street. That's what you're seeing here. Each townhouse has two one-bedroom apartments, one on the first floor and another on the second. This proposed residential development is designed in keeping with the T O D design guidelines, and we've received a positive review letter from the town architect. Next slide, please. From the interior of the site, we can see all three buildings, a total of nine quote townhouses that are actually eighteen apartments. The buildings are designed as a clean, modern twist with a familiar architectural vocabulary. The gable roofs, double-hung windows, and undulating facades reflect charming downtown Bethel. The design is unassuming and fits well into this eclectic neighborhood, which includes single-family homes, multifamily apartment buildings, as well as commercial buildings. Next slide, please. Thank you. The building height is kept low with eight-foot ceilings. The three buildings are similar to each other, but not matchy-matchy copy ones. They are each unique and special, and they're more like siblings than triplets. Next slide, please. We are proposing a mix of traditional building materials, clapboard, board and batten siding, and vertical siding. The colors are based on historic New England paints, beige, gray-blue, gray, warm brown, and white, and I do have samples with me. Um, next slide, please. Architectural asphalt roofs will be detailed with charcoal gray gutters and trim. Windows will all be the same size and a four-over-one design, but will vary in color based on the home color, either dark bronze or pebble gray, and this subtle mix of colors adds variety and visual interest to the site. Next slide, please. Uh, each building will have six one-bedroom apartments. Round floor units will be handicap accessible and compliant with the state building code. Apartments will offer private laundry, walk-in closets, and kitchen living room grate rooms. The buildings will comply with the latest building, fire, and energy codes. Thank you.
Thanks, Maura. Now, I'd like to ask Abigail Adams of A2 Land Consulting to go through our, um, Bethel architecture. Um, I just want to make one note before Abigail starts, which is that we submitted a photometric plan to the commission. We've since revised that plan, and we're just waiting to finish up all revisions, first set of plans, before we sit for revision. But we're going to show you the revised plan tonight when we get there.
Great. Thank you. Uh, good evening. For the record, my name is Abigail Adams, Registered Landscape Architect and owner of A2 Land Consulting out of New Fairfield, Connecticut. Uh, uh, Maura and Peter have walked you through the site a little bit, um, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to start with the fact that our driveway entrance is, um, to the west of the site. And as you move into the driveway, we are flanking that driveway with two oaks and some ornamental hydrangeas. Along the streetscape Greenwood Avenue and then up into Prospect Street, we're proposing, um, a mix of street trees, junior giants, which are the new sibling to the green giants. They get about fifteen and twenty, but same texture, same everything, uh, great tree. Those will be in between the street trees, along with a mix of hibiscus, panical hydrangea, and by vernoms. What we are trying to do here is evoke a nice residential space where we're creating not full screening, but we're doing varying heights to create a really nice atmosphere along that streetscape of Greenwood Avenue. In regards to the sidewalk, the sidewalk will be ending just to the east of the main entrance.
I dropped the mouse, and it wasn't sent out. Just give me a second.
Pretty quick recovery. Uh, right, yeah. Very good, very good. So to the east of the driveway, we opted not to cut in a four-foot wide sidewalk along the entire frontage of that line because, as Maura was mentioning, we have this beautiful existing retaining wall that we would like to maintain as you move towards sixty seven side of the property, the eastern side of the property. And also, if we cut into that slope that we have now, what we would end up doing is creating a brand-new retaining wall pushed back and pushing all of the plant material closer to the building. Uh, we want to keep it closer to the street, more natural light into the building, just create a more residential feel for that area. On the western side of the property, we have a row of evergreen screening. It's a combination of Green Giant Arborvitae's where we have the space, and then we move to some upright yews. And then in that northwestern corner, we have some spruces, um, that move around to the north, and those create some screening for the refuse area that we have up in that corner of the, the driveway access and the parking. We have provided a level lawn area, slightly sloped lawn area for the residents to use. Um, nice area to set up picnic tables, some picnic blankets if you want to spend some time out, throw a ball. There in some green space that is provided there. And again, we carry some of that screen planting, um, along the northern property line to create some more privacy for that use. Interiors of the lot, we have canopy trees, which include, uh, some black gums, little-leaf lindens, and then again, along the streetscape, uh, Royal Prince Oaks. As we move around the property to the northeast corner, again, that's when we start getting into more screen planting. Uh, along that corner, we have some, um, American hollies, some green giants, and some other plant material there. Along the eastern property line above the retaining wall, so there's buildings, some lawn, large retaining wall, and then above the retaining wall, we have a mix of, uh, sweet gums, the slight flats, some up, upright Arborvitae's, and then some upright juniper's down along that property line. Overall, the plan provides, uh, four-season interest for both residents living in the site and along the streets. So we've created a lot of variety in both, uh, the heights, textures, flowering seasons for all of this plant material. Uh, we can go to the photometric plan. Oh, is that Peter? Okay. That came in small. All right. Uh, we provided a photometric plan for the property. We are proposing the moment fixture by landscape forms, so we've provided images of those. There's the pole mount and also the wall mount. Ignore the color. Those are just images from the spec sheet, so you could understand the style that we're looking for. The pole fixtures that we're proposing are along the entrance drive and then throughout the parking area with a mounting height of both ten and twelve feet, depending on the need. And the wall-mounted fixtures are located on the building. Those are, you can see those letterings in red. I know it's a little small on this plan. Um, we've indicated the foot candles, and in this revised plan, we have no spillage over the property line except just a minute amount at the main entrance drive, where there is a little bit of sidewalk to the west of the property. The color temperatures we're proposing are three thousand K, and, uh, the fixture and pole color has not been determined, but will look to be a dark bronze to complement the architecture.
Abigail, can you explain what you mean by the temperature of three thousand K?
Uh, so that is, um, the warmth or the, or the brightness. So if you go down to twenty-five hundred, twenty-seven hundred, it starts to get that more orangey color. When you go up to five thousand, you're at the bright white, so we are somewhere in between, and Maura can.
I can geek out on that part of it.
Go ahead.
Kelvin temperature, uh, which, um, it's separate from how bright a light is. It's, it's the, it's the tone of the color you get from the light. Right? So most of our houses, you want them to be like twenty-seven hundred at home and then, uh, to three thousand. And then our offices are like thirty-five hundred probably, and when you're in the hospital and it's like blue, it's like five, four, five, four thousand, five thousand. So, um, like the mall or something would be really cold and too bright, and that's probably four thousand. So we'll stick with three, which is a nice comfortable residential number.
Good, thank you. Um, next up, we have John Reevenhanser, who's been working on the civil engineering side of this. Mark, can you answer?
Sorry. Good evening. For the record, I'm Martin Hutter. I'm a licensed structural engineer. Um, we're, uh, Stuart Hummer Company, John Mack from Eravasa is here as well. I just wanted to kind of give you a brief summary of what the plans are and how we lay things out. Um, can you go to the next slide? That's Julie Moore, my focus. So we have here the brick and driveway kind of in central between the two existing buildings. We're proposing to close that off and create a new driveway on the west side coming off of Greenwood Avenue and access to inches of rear sight. So all the parking, it's going to be in the back of the building. You won't see it parked on those. We had met, uh, a while ago with DOT and some preliminary comments when we met with them. Obviously, we will give some any further, um, say to them, we're still in development stages at that time. So they'll have further, uh, for this company. One of the things I wanted to focus on, on Greenwood Avenue, and I know we talked about it briefly. There's an existing sidewalk that went from, um, the west crunch towards, um, Sky Grove and hence at this first driveway at sixty seven. So we're initially, we're supposed to end the sidewalk at the west side of the driveway entrance. Uh, we were talking about maybe extending because of one of the comments, and the field comment that we have received in the town staff was wondering if we could extend it outside or to the end of the yelling. Maura mentioned, maybe we would rather not put it on top of that stone, it's a dry stone, we can wall if we start putting it. And we might, uh, take the integrity of that wall. So we're thinking of, we're working on a plan to end it at the second driveway with a stop sign comes out of Sky Grove. We're still not even reading that proposal. I know one of the other comments would have a sidewalk into the site itself, looking at various occasions for that as well. We have received comments from the fire department. Uh, we're looking to, uh, widening up this path area to provide the fire department more turnabout room. Uh, we're in the development stage, and once we have that further research, we will need the fire department to try to make sure that their turnabout is adequate for what they are looking for. One of the other comments that we, um, the four parking spaces were designated for electrical vehicles. We had four spaces designated mixed to the dumpsters. There was a concern with town staff with flower operations might impact that area. So we're thinking of taking these four spaces and putting them up here, so that they're not the way of flowering operation for snow, snow. Uh, we're doing some minor revisions to address a lot of the comments that will be made by the town engineer reviewing, um, comments. Yeah, we're also looking at the, 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 a little further on the town, the east boundary. There's some kind of concern about the functioning that brought to the U G C property, so we're designing that with it. Grade wise, we're coming in at most. Uh, Greenwood, we have quite a bit of grade change between Greenwood Avenue in the northeast corner. We're coming in at six percent initially off Greenwood Avenue, just stretch of the driveway at twelve percent. Parking lot is reduced anywhere from six to five percent grade. Handicap parking will all be at two percent or less. The beach, uh, eighty-eight, mine. Dumpers at the fourth last corner. We're making some minor changes to that area. Sorry, guys, I'm a kind of, kind of sticky, my intel. Drainage, we're doing something about a further evaluation on that. Uh, we have that through water and sewer commission, and they have approved that, uh, application for the water and sewer commission. So, you know, for the eighteen years that are in.
Mark, um, we got a comment from the fire marshal about the turning diagram, which is.
That's the very lack.
Yeah.
Bad plan. Yeah, initially, we had shown it coming in, but they want to be able to turn around. Uh, I want to indicate in earlier, we're looking to shift this by spaces to give more room in there for that turnaround and come back out.
Also, the fire marshal provided the dimensions of.
Yes.
Of the current aerial truck that the downtown fire department has. Have you prepared that with this plan?
I have not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
I thought the answer was going to be yes, and we're fine.
No.
We'll, we'll get the answer to that.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Uh, I'm going to go all the way back to the first slide because there's an issue that both, um, Abigail and Mark touched on, which is the sidewalk and, and its interface in the road. So I've always known that as Prospect Street, that not side road. I don't really know where side road comes from, but whatever it's called, it's there. It comes, Prospect Street comes in perpendicular to Greenwood Avenue at the top of this little hill, and then it goes down both sides to meet up with Greenwood Avenue. So there's a current sidewalk. It's, it's asphalt-covered in this location, and you can see it running across the front of sixty nine Greenwood, and it stops at two driveways. There are two, two existing driveways. Um, we had proposed that we have a, that it stop at the new driveway, and that we have a curb on this Prospect Street side road where it comes down on that side and interfaces with Greenwood Avenue. And we got some comments from the engineer review and public works review that they didn't seem to like that. So, um, what we've decided to do is extend the sidewalk um, all the way to the stop sign, which is at the end of this Prospect Street side road hill, which.
You could see it on the previous slide.
You'd see it on the previous slide?
Yeah, you see in the far right, the black, you see the wrong side of it.
So you see the shadow of the stop sign.
Yeah.
It's where the stop sign is. We'll extend the sidewalk all the way to the stop sign. Um, sort of in this area here, will probably be a little bit of an angle to the road, um, which is, if you look at the, the site plan, you can see the curve that we had proposed. We're just going to follow that curve line for the sidewalk, with the concrete sidewalk, with concrete curves, as, as you requested by the engineer. So the issue that we've sort of wrestled with is what to do for the rest of it, which is why I put this slide up here. There is this nice, uh, little retaining wall that's probably been there quite a long time that we don't really want to disturb. Um, one of the questions was, can you preserve it while you're doing your work? We think the answer is yes, um, but if not, we'll, you know, we'll reconstruct it if, if an issue comes up. Um, so what do we do about a sidewalk? So there's obviously no room for a sidewalk on the street side of the wall um, that would take away, you know, like half of the width of the road. It's not very wide. Um, if we put it on the left of the wall, at the top of the wall, our property doesn't go all the way to Prospect Street. There's a whole other property when you get halfway up, you know, before you, before you get to Prospect Street. So we could only put the sidewalk up to a certain point, and then it would stop at the top of a wall, and you'd have to construct some kind of a stair or ramp or something to get down to the road. Again, would take up far too much space, probably not a good idea to have a stair on the sidewalk, uh, a couple steps. And as Abigail pointed out, if we, um, excavate this wall out of existence, move this whole thing five feet back and build a new wall, we essentially take away that nice little backyard backyard that those, that those units have, move the screening right on top of the house and take away all the natural light, so.
And impact someone else's house.
Um, yeah, yeah. And the next property still is there and it would stop at a wall. Um, that was Tom Turner, give the voice to say that. So we think that we've come up with the best solution, which is to extend the sidewalk to the stop sign. Let it stop there and somebody who's a pedestrian wants to walk up to Prospect Street, will walk into the street, just like they do now. Um, and what's not to change the existing condition.
We also run a paint line down that side about two feet out to encourage people to stay closer.
Um, something, some.
From the corner all the way to the stop sign.
It's something like um,
Like a bicycle.
Yeah, yeah. Well, like when you're normally seeing a road, you have the yellow line and then all the white line on the side.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, and we could probably run that all the way up to Prospect, because that doesn't impact that property on. So that's all that we have for our presentation today. We're happy to hear the commission's comments and questions and from the members of the public as well. I'm going to relinquish my control of this and that's about it. I'll keep the sharing up in case somebody needs to refer to it.
They clearly take it down, Mr. Wilson.
You want to do it?
Yeah, please.
Thank you much. And now we have to get the
You want to um, give me three months over here?
Yeah, I don't know how to get it.
I can. Picture it all the people.
Excellent, thank you. Um, I will turn it over to anyone online. Does anyone have, online have any questions, comments, questions, concerns?
For those that have not joined a meeting online with us before, there is a toolbar at the bottom of the Google Meet app. And one of the icons, uh, when you scroll over it to, it says raise hands. Clicking on that icon helps us to establish a queue for those who want to offer public comments this week.
See anybody?
Not seeing any hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Just trying to spread your note out. My apologies. Um, all right, we see no one. Is there anyone here? Do we have the sign up? Do we do that?
The sign up sheet, the sign up list is outside. I'll bring that in for you.
Thank you. Does everyone have a chance to sign up that wants to sign up? Did you, do you want to sign up?
Well, I don't know what that means.
Did you want to make comment on this proposal?
No, on this one.
Okay. There is a sign up sheet in the hallway uh, for the next application. So if you'd like to um, write a comment, what he's asking, it makes our meetings go a little bit smoother. Have everyone's uh, name written out. Excellent.
Put my name on it. Put my name on it.
Is there anyone else for the sixty-seven, sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue? I have Jan Moy of Petwell.
I need to put my name then.
Your name, ma'am?
Maria Rapley.
I'm sorry, your last name?
R A P L E Y.
And your address?
Well, I have a fourth family at sixty-three, which is right adjacent to where they would be.
Yeah.
And Patrick, your address?
Thirty-one National Road Extension.
Okay. Ms. Moy, floor is yours.
Hi, Jan Moy. I'm on me down you. A lot of my questions have been answered. I have a couple, one. I'm just wondering about the tenants who live there now and what's going to happen to them. Um, is this going to be phased in? Are they going to be allowed to move into other units before the rest of them are built? Are we going to lose those people from Bethel? You know, that's a concern of mine. Another concern is just seeing these houses torn down. Um, for years I've sat here and heard TOD protects Greenwood Avenue and the old houses. Well, obviously, that's not true. Um, and I guess we will have to live with that reality for no one.
Thank you. Um, well.
Sure. Dave, could you help me get started here?
I'll be right with you, Mr. Wild. Can you name us Pat Wild? Good evening, everybody. Uh, as I mentioned, I live at thirty-one National Road Extensions. I'm a lifelong resident of Bethel and for the last thirty-two years, I've served as a town historian. In just a minute, I wish to share a short PowerPoint presentation about the houses at sixty-seven and sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue. But I first wanted to emphasize an important point before I begin. When I speak of historic buildings, the term historic does not mean that these structures appear on either the state register or the national register of historic places. There are only a few buildings in Bethel that hold that designation. It is important to realize that when a building is placed on the state or national register, it is an honorary recognition that provides absolutely no protection. Even if a building is on one or both registers, its owner still has the right to tear it down if they choose. The only thing that legally protects the structure from destruction is a legal zoning regulation. And even that can still be challenged in courts. Bethel has no such zoning restrictions. If there is no legal protection, you may therefore ask why I choose to speak on this planned housing development. My first purpose is to politely appeal to the property owner to develop an alternate plan that will preserve the two existing buildings. My second purpose is to provide information to the owners, the planning and zoning commission, and the townspeople of Bethel, highlighting the history of these two buildings and emphasizing what would be lost if this proposal were to be accepted in its current form. I hope this information will help create support for the preservation of both buildings currently at risk.
All right, Davey.
So, start me up. I don't want to um, leave let your computer. Unless, is it, do you mind if I do that?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Oh, it went back down to the small.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh.
As you can see, we were both making use of the same Google Maps.
Yeah. Say about two.
Thank you so much. All right. As you saw in the previous presentation, we have the two buildings, sixty-nine on the left and sixty-seven on the right. Now, just to give you a little history, the house at sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue was built in eighteen eighteen by Stiles Wakely. It was sold in eighteen nineteen to a man named John Williams, who in eighteen twenty-two, sold it to Asil Beebe, who lived here for most of the nineteenth century. It has stood for two hundred and seven years. When it was built, James Monroe was serving as our nation's fifth president and the U S had only twenty states. The date of the house's construction can be confirmed by the fact that the property was sold by Noah S. Ferry and his wife, Trusilla Ferry, Stiles Wakely on December eighth, eighteen seventeen. And at that time, there is no mention of any buildings on the property. Wakely next sells the property on July twelfth, eighteen nineteen. And the deed of sale specifically mentions a dwelling house on the property. So we know the window was between eighteen seventeen and eighteen nineteen without a doubt. The uh, source of this information, Danbury, Connecticut Land Records, volume eighteen, volume nineteen, and volume twenty-one. Sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue retains most of its original eighteen eighteen architectural integrity, including its front door, ransom light, side lights, front steps, and gable fan light window. You can see that I pointed out with the arrows, all of those features. Even the granite steps would have been the original ones going back to eighteen eighteen. The gable window that I have shown on the bottom left hand corner is a very rare architectural detail in our area. You will only find five or six houses in all of Bethel that still maintain this feature. If you look closely, the window has had a storm window uh, created for it. But behind that storm window, you can see the original glass panel window with the spoke radiating, radiating out from the center. So to find a house this intact after all this time is pretty amazing. And here's another picture of that rare architectural feature, a federal style elliptical fan light gable window with a wooden keystone at its top. The fan light window on the building's west side currently has later storm window, as I mentioned. However, beneath the storm window is the original window pane. A duplicate of one found on the west side of twenty-seven Main Street. I'm going to show you more about that building in just a minute, but as I said, there are only a handful of these still surviving in Bethel. Uh, this is a close up of one that can be found on the west side of twenty-seven Main Street. Here is a photograph of sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue as it looked about nineteen forty. At that point, the house still retained some of its original windows. So if you look at the upper half of each of those windows, those are original. The bottom half has been replaced with a larger pane. A house similar to sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue can be found at twenty-seven Main Street. Built by Captain Isaac H. Sealy around eighteen sixteen, it also retains many of its original architectural features, but has a reversed floor plan. Both houses are excellent examples of the federal or Adams style of architecture popular in the United States between seventeen eighty and eighteen forty. Sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue and twenty-seven Main Street are shown side by side. The image of twenty-seven Main Street has been flipped for easier comparison. The houses may have had the same building. Here's a lost example of a federal style building that once existed at thirty-one Main Street in Bethel. Uh, it was destroyed by fire in February two thousand and four. Land records suggest that this house was also built in eighteen sixteen by Stiles Wakely, who was responsible for constructing sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue. Same man, he was deeply involved in, in real estate. He built this house, which unfortunately is torn, and he also built sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue. Now, this is the oldest surviving map of downtown Bethel. It's the eighteen fifty-one David McCarthy map of Danbury and Bethel. On this map, you can see the Asil Beebe House at sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue. You see it listed on the map as A B. To the right of it, you see the house of Irina Barnum, the mother of P T Barnum, at fifty-five Greenwood Avenue, which also still exists. And furthest to the right, you see the George Clapp House at forty-five Greenwood Avenue. That also still survives. It stands at the corner of Greenwood Avenue and Oxford Street. Now, here's where it starts to get interesting and you have to pay attention. Sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue, the Asil Beebe House is shown enlarged and I have circled an adjacent structure. Notice that the structure is unlabeled. However, when Prospect Street was created in the eighteen fifties, an old schoolhouse, which had not been used for school purposes since eighteen twenty-eight, was moved and attached to the northeast corner of sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue, traditionally known as the Asil Beebe House. Beebe lived from seventeen ninety-four to eighteen eighty-five. If you see what I've tried to do here, at the extreme right, you see a cutout on the eighteen fifty-one McCarthy map. You see the Asil Beebe House to the left, you see that unlabeled structure to the right. That's the old schoolhouse. You then see the blue arrow showing you how they moved that schoolhouse and attached it to the back of sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue. The inset map is from a nineteen oh one sandborne fire insurance map. Now, it's even more interesting. In a speech given in Bethel on August nineteenth, eighteen eighty-one, P T Barnum recalled his old school. He says, and I quote, "The old schoolhouse stood near where Asil Beebe's house now stands." He also mentions uh, Noah Ferry, who lived where George Clapp was. That was down the street. His mother lived between Asil Beebe and George Clapp. This speech was quoted in the history of Danbury and published in eighteen ninety-six. In his first autobiography, published in eighteen fifty-five, Barnum spoke of his school days. "I commenced going to school at the age of about six years." "The first day, which I recollect inscribing upon my writing book, was eighteen eighteen." So this means that he would have started school between eighteen sixteen and eighteen eighteen. He probably continued to about eighteen twenty-two. He went for one term to uh, what was known as the academy on Worcester Street in Danbury, where he had to walk from his home, Greenwood Avenue, into Worcester Street in Danbury and back again each day. That was the extent of his education. He finished up when he was about twelve years old. In talking about his uh, days attending his Bethel schoolhouse, he didn't have a lot uh, of good to say. He said, "The first three male teachers used a feral," alright, and people don't know what a feral is anymore. Bottom right hand corner, it's a ruler, a tightened end, formerly used for punishing children. Alright, it was like a yardstick that the teachers would use to enforce discipline. Now, if harsher measures were needed, it goes on to say, "And a dark dungeon, which was built in the house near the schoolhouse, was tenanted nearly all the time during school hours by some unlucky juvenile, frequently under eight years of age, who had incurred the displeasure of the one manpower." So in other words, if a student was able to really get on the nerves of the teacher, he would be locked in the cellar of the school. Now, before I tell you more about that, this is another reference to the schoolhouse that existed first to the right of the Asil Beebe House, sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue, and then later connected to it. Barnum's grandfather, the man for whom he was named, Phineas Taylor, once owned number two Chestnut Street and operated it as a tavern. He was responsible for building that structure. He later sold that building to Stiles Wakely. We keep hearing that name. In the deed, he granted Wakely the following right, "With liberty to cart his hay and grain through my other land to his barn from a schoolhouse standing southwardly on the highway." And this comes from Danbury Land Records, volume seventeen. If you take a look at the red arrow that I've created here, you see the schoolhouse that was directly on the highway. Greenwood Avenue, when it was known as Elm Street, was much narrower. And basically, this schoolhouse would have kind of sat where you now go up that in go up that inclined portion of Prospect Street. Down at the bottom, you see a photocopy of the actual deed itself in old handwriting, mentioning the words "schoolhouse." Now, sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue appears on several different historic maps. The one I showed you earlier was from eighteen fifty-one. The next, on the left-hand side of this slide, is from eighteen fifty-six. Here, the houses are shown by generic squares, and so the addition is not clearly evident. However, a Beers Atlas map from eighteen sixty-seven shows the house, once again labeled A B. And here, the schoolhouse addition is evident. Prospect Street, indicated by the red arrows, was initially called New Street and was created between eighteen fifty-two and eighteen thirty-six. Now, here's a great illustration. It's from a bird's eye view of Bethel, showing sixty-nine and sixty-seven Greenwood Avenue as they looked in eighteen seventy-nine. If you look carefully up towards the top, Prospect Street, again, had not yet obtained that name, it was still known as New Street. Down below, you see sixty-nine and sixty-seven Greenwood Avenue looking very much as they do today. And you also see a blue star, which indicates the original site of the schoolhouse. But you can also see, if you look carefully, this shows the schoolhouse after it had been tacked on to the back of sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue. Now, here is the best image I can show you to illustrate the schoolhouse. The old schoolhouse is shown attached to the northeast corner of sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue. And a similar schoolhouse found in Barkhamsted, Connecticut, is shown for comparison. The former school now sits lower than it did originally. The hillside behind the house was excavated so that the foundations of the existing house and its addition could be placed at the same level. But when you take a look at the size and the shape and even the configuration of the windows, you can see that it closely resembles this typical schoolhouse from Barkhamsted, Connecticut. Here is a better image of that building. And what I wanted to point out to you, remember Barnum was talking about his school days? And he talked about students being locked in the basement as a punishment. This school also had a similar cellar, similar to what Barnum had referred to as a dark dungeon. The right-hand side of the school, using this building as an example, would have originally faced Greenwood Avenue. So in other words, the property slopes down to the street, the school would have had a cellar that had a door or entryway facing down towards Greenwood Avenue. Now, the house at sixty-seven Greenwood Avenue is an example of a Greek revival-style architecture and was built about eighteen sixty. Its original owner was Azor Mead, a shoemaker who bought the property in eighteen fifty-six. He bought the lot at that time. The house does not appear on the eighteen fifty-eight map of Bethel, but does appear on one produced in eighteen sixty-seven. The bottom left-hand corner, you see the grave of Azor Mead, who lived from eighteen oh six to eighteen ninety-two. He's buried in the Center Cemetery on South Street. The top right-hand corner, you see Azor Mead and his family as they were shown in the eighteen sixty census. And the bottom right-hand corner, you see A Mead labeling a building just to the right of another building labeled A B. From eighteen sixty-seven. Now, some conclusions that I think can be drawn. Two historic structures would be lost if this proposed development were approved, one dating back to eighteen eighteen and the other to approximately eighteen sixty. The house at sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue is of historic importance for several distinct reasons, one of which is that it is an excellent example of federal-style architecture that is still very much in its original state. A portion of this same house is a surviving example of a small one-room schoolhouse dating from the late eighteenth century or slightly earlier. This same schoolhouse was once attended by P T Barnum, who was unquestionably the most notable figure to ever live in Bethel. In nineteen ninety, he was named one of the one hundred most important people of the past one thousand years by Life Magazine. And that's not just the United States, we're talking the world. He was number eighty on the one hundred most important people of the past one thousand years. Sixty-seven Greenwood Avenue is a Greek revival-style house dating to approximately eighteen sixty. The same young Abraham Lincoln was elected president. It has been a fixture overlooking Greenwood Avenue for the past one hundred and sixty-five years. The demolition of these two houses would represent an irreplaceable loss of Bethel's heritage and would greatly diminish the historical character of the downtown district. And in closing, I know that despite the information just presented, there will be those who still say, "Well, they're just two old buildings." And that is true, they are just two old buildings. But by the same token, you might say that the Declaration of Independence and the U.S. Constitution are just two old pieces of paper. Now, some may consider that overdramatization, but whether you're talking about old documents or old buildings, our regard for their importance says a great deal about who we are and how much we value what has been handed down to us. I hope that the people of Bethel, equipped with the information provided, will make it clear that they do not want to lose these two unique examples of the rich historical heritage. I thank the Commission for being allowed to do my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wild. That was a trip. Well, that was a lot of good information, I appreciate that. Uh, Maria Rathley, sixty-three Greenwood Avenue.
Good afternoon, or evening, actually, it's late. I totally agree with Mr. Wild. I think the buildings, although they're lovely, they look more like they belong in Colorado, not on downtown Greenwood Avenue. I think it definitely will continue to change the character and the historical value of Greenwood Avenue. Um, I owned fifty-seven Greenwood Avenue, uh, twenty years ago. And I own sixty-three, it's a fourth family, right on the corner of Prospect in Greenwood Avenue. And the traffic pattern there is horrendous, and that's without eighteen more units. I'm not sure how many, um, parking spaces you will have per unit, but that little, you know, prospect, that little hill that you go down, it's tight. It's very tight unless you fear into Greenwood Avenue to try to exit out of that hump. It's, you know, it's very busy. And I think eighteen units there will just create even more of a problem and heading, you know, like towards sicko and stuff right there. That is huge, you know, I lived there, I lived at fifty-seven, so I can tell you. And then also I visit my, you know, that fourth family a lot, and there's a lot, a lot of traffic there. And I think those safety units will just create even more, um, of a, just a mess there. Uh, and I really am sad to see just all the historical character of the town just disappearing little by little. Uh, and like I said, it looks like Colorado, like if you go down to Westport, the same kind of units are there, and it totally has changed the look. You know, if you travel around the country, that's, that's what's happening. Um, I'm also concerned about the eastern boundary to my property when you are building, uh, and tearing down, you know, the dust, you know, I have tenants there. Um, and the cars that are there parked, you know, what's going to happen while they're building? You know, what sort, well, you know, what are they going to, um, protection will they provide? Um, for the dust and the debris and all of that that will be going onto my parking space there. And if you walk the property, you will see that it's like right there on that edge. So, um, you know, that's a concern of mine. Um, and then also, what kind of timeframe, you know, will this demolition take? And, um, and how it will impact that whole road? And, you know, the school buses that go there, the kids that come down from Prospect and walk down that little, that, you know, it's really a road, but a lot of people walk it. It's, it's a, you know, very usable place. So anyway, that's all I had to say, um. But I hope that some, you know, if it goes forward, I hope some of those renditions uh, are changed to make, like, uh, Mr. Wild said, like, keeping those historical homes and maybe adding towards the back or, uh, at the very least, make it look more in keeping the historical character of the, of Greenwood Avenue as opposed to looking like a Colorado condo place, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, before I turn it over to the Commission, I think I saw one person online. Please throw their hand up, you see that?
Yes, so it looks like Nico J. has the hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Nico, I'd ask a comment.
Hey, how's everything going?
Name and address?
Nicholas Jordan, twenty-two Wolf Pitts Road.
Thank you. For Jordan.
Um, I just wanted to thank Mr. Wild, first of all, for his, um, really important and honorable presentation on these two buildings, whose history I didn't know about prior, but I had the impression from looking at their architecture over the years that they were historic buildings, in fact. Um, so thank you very much, Patrick, for that. Um, and just to share a personal anecdote from a situation that I had recently in my life involving a historic building on my own property here in Bethel. We had an old barn from the eighteen hundreds at the old seventeen hundreds house that I grew up in that was in, you know, disrepair, it was an old tobacco barn, cow barn. And it was certainly a historic building and beautiful in every aspect. Um, it, from that perspective. And it, we had a few years ago, you know, the opportunity to potentially renovate it, and my brother wanted to, 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 to do something with it, to bring it up to date into the modern era, um, and more usable. And it was the same question that we're arguing with, you know, here, or grappling with here tonight, that, you know, what can you do? Can you keep these historic buildings and still give them modern functional value um, to the property owner? So I and my brother, if you take that, this example, had to be, were the opposite ends of the argument. I was the historic preservationist lamenting the loss of this historic building um, to the old farm and what it meant, you know, for generations of, of Bethelites who had lived here for hundreds of years. And he was less, not necessarily less sentimental about it, but more, you know, practical and forward-thinking, and he wanted to, you know, rebuild it as like a functional, well-insulated, well-heated, you know, efficient, cost-effective, but usable structure for today's society, which is no longer cattle farming, you know, in Bethel right now. Um, or tobacco farming, but is, you know, his workshop. And he came to, I think, a genius, you know, solution, and he did, in the end, end up tearing the structure down. And I don't know if that will make Patrick, you know, turn in his seat or whatever. Um, but he rebuilt it from the ground up with proper foundation, um, in the same footprint, foundational footprint, he didn't move, he didn't change the location. Uh, the dimensions of the building were maybe slightly altered. Um, you know, with, but all in keeping, uh, with the historic preservation of the building. He, he used modern materials, but the proportions are right and the design, he timber-framed the structure. I mean, it's, it's quality through and through. It's now the best, I dare say, the best insulated structure in the town. Um, very functional, totally modern, and nobody, I think, looking from a distance or driving past or through the area would think, "Oh, what an eyesore." You know, it's this modern rendition of the historic barn, and it's its new evolution into the twenty-first century, so to speak. Um, and it's carried it through. So if you're all following me, that's pretty much, I think, was the best of both worlds options. And here I am, a staunch advocate for historic preservation myself, and, you know, against tearing down that barn, right? Or these old houses. And there is a way. And if we keep an eye to the past with, you know, our, with a vision for the future, with proper guidance and good materials, like these engineers look like they're very, very capable landscape architects, very, very, you know, um, invested in what they're doing in this project, it looks like, which I really appreciate, um, compared to some that I've seen. And I, you know, would implore them to look into this and to you guys as the Commission, I guess, to explore opportunities like this that we have to preserve these historic buildings and bring them up to date in the modern, um, to the modern world to be more functional for us and to find that compromise. And, um, mostly that's it. And, uh, and to, to keep the street, the canopy trees along the street as well, I would encourage, because that's part of the historic nature of the site and of Elm Street. Thank you for reminding us what it used to be called, changed to Greenwood Avenue when we lost the Elms to the Dutch elm disease. Um, that's something for another day, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nico.
Appreciate it.
I'm gonna turn it over to the Commission, start.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to members of the public?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, just have a few comments. The, the tenants in the existing units will have to move out. Structures will be demolished and will build new ones, and they're welcome to go back, but there will be a substantial lag time between the local developments and the completion of the new ones. So it's unlikely that they can stand, but just the way it goes, I guess. Um, some, some quick comments. We, we're providing forty-one parking spaces off-site for eighteen one-bedroom units. I think every project that I propose to you over the last three years, I've made a plea to you should look at your parking regulations, but forty-one spaces for eighteen units, there will be a lot of parking rules over here. Um, as one of the requirements of the Transit Oriented Development District, you have a village architect on retainer with you that reviews every project in the TOD for architectural conformity to what we think the look and feel of downtown Bethel is supposed to be. That's Alyssa Bopati. She submitted a letter to your record, um, having reviewed this architecture, and I think it was a very positive recommendation. And I venture to say I haven't seen as positive a recommendation for architecture in any project I've worked on that Alyssa has reviewed. Okay, that's good to hear, it's nice to talk about history. I always learn a tremendous amount when Pat Wild presents to the Commission. I appreciate the hard work he's put into this. But I need to be very blunt, these buildings are coming down. That's my client's decision. Um, there is nothing in the Planning and Zoning Regulations or statutes that gives the Planning and Zoning Commission any authority to prevent the demolition of buildings, even if they're historic. It's simply not within your authority to do. Um, and I think Pat recognized that at the beginning, and there, it may be the case that we wish it were different. There are things that can be done to protect historic areas and historic structures. We could create a historic district, a historic district commission. But the good citizens of Bethel have rejected that for as long as I can remember. People don't necessarily want to have those limitations put on their property. And so I, I, you know, I think it's been a while since anybody tried, but there have been those efforts in the past, and they have not succeeded. So while we can lament the loss of history, the best that we can do is document that history. So while we can lament the loss of history, the best that we can do is document that history and preserve what of it we can. So what we would say is if the rear of the building at sixty-nine turns out to be this historic school structure, we are happy to gift it to the town. Come and get it. Mr. Curse Leckman, I'm sure you've got a piece of property set aside for it where you can build a foundation and come get it and move it there and make it the historic PT Park and School House or whatever it's called. Happy to assist with that, but the, the town isn't interested in that, or they're not. Private organizations that are interested in taking into account that effort. Well, as I say, you can't force us to leave it there. Um, the various components of the structure itself that may be architecturally significant, the, the gable window, the front door, um, we're happy to donate those to whoever wants them uh, for reuse in the structure, for preservation, um, for people to come look at. And in fact, that's typically what you do when you have a structure that is not going to be saved. You go into it and you document it, you photograph it, you take pieces out of it that are important to save. And once that's done, down the building comes. In, in terms of renovating in place, uh, to be blunt, this is an investment property. It's not Mr. Connor's home. It's not a labor of love. Um, there is no financial case to replicate these buildings in place as they look now. We actually did that very recently on a project in Bethel at forty-two Plum Trees, Reynolds House. Um, we took down the historic home, rebuilt it in place. I think it looks identical and maybe that's just, I don't remember the three months when it was gone, still not rebuilt, but I, you know, I, I'm sure an architect could tell me all the things that had changed about it, but I think it preserved the look and feel, but that was in the context of a development that was creating eleven units, two of which were in that building. And so that's how we paid for that effort was the additional nine units. Um, so it can be done. It just can't be done in this context. Um, I'd like to ask Mr. Punter to just give a little bit about his experiences with these buildings since he bought them and what they look like on the inside, which, you know, the outside's great, but he's the one who's got to maintain it. He's got to deal with the electrical systems, the plumbing systems, the walls, the windows, the insulation that's causing the heat bills, et cetera. So, Tom.
And I, and I think that's my, and my name's Tom Tornard. Uh, I am the owner of properties. I did buy them seven years ago. Um, so I bought them as an investment property and something that I've worked on. I've done all the work. I do all the landscaping. I'm there four days a week. Uh, that's my job. Um, so I have put a lot of passion and energy into it. But every time I fix something, something else goes wrong. The wiring's old, the electrics old. If you were to see the stacked stone foundations, they're beginning to cave in. Um, there's a number of different amendments that are changes that were made to the beams underneath. And so there's jacks under in different places and different boards. It's, it, it's not practical to be able to take and renovate on top of that foot. That footprint has to be removed. You couldn't build on that foundation. Um, it's impossible. And the concept of taking and rebuilding and investing a tremendous amount of money. And again, I'm not a developer. This is the only property I own. Um, so I'm not someone who goes and builds or this was, this is something that will stay with me and it's something that I intend to have my kids be involved. They've been involved with me. If anyone is on Greenwood Avenue, they've seen us out there working in the yard through college, um, that's supported some of their, um, you know, their college finances. Um, and my, um, intention is to have this and then as I get too old to take care of it, it'll go to them and it'll stay in my family. This is something that's not going to be built and sold. Um, I don't go develop a lot of things. I've never developed anything in my life other than this. Um, so this was bought as a passion, but it's just impossible to keep up. And the concept of taking it down and rebuilding the same, while that is a beautiful idea, and here you made me sound cold to say that, um, you know, that I don't care and this is an investment, but I, you know, and I do appreciate the, the age of it. Um, but I, I don't think there's a way to take this property structurally and rebuild it. And if you did, you'd be generating the same income that you get now, investing all the money to rebuild it. And that's just not I wouldn't be able to afford it. Um, practically right now, um, you know, could look at my tax returns. I, I, I haven't made money on this. Uh, but I do think it's a great investment. It's paying my mortgage and I know it's a long-term good investment, so I don't question it. Um, but the idea of taking it, rebuilding it and then getting, generating the same income would be just, it would be negative. It would, it would have me, I would be making, I would be losing money um, rather than essentially bringing it.
Tom, can you describe the area of sixty-nine?
Um, yeah, I mean, sixty-nine, I've gone in and redone every apartment's tube moved out. So three to four, I've redone. I've redone the kitchens, new appliances. Um, but every time I do it, the ceilings are crooked. Um, there'll be, um, if there'll be a pipe that bursts and you have to open up the ceiling and then trying to match the old ceilings. The electric, I patch it and I get approval and it's all licensed. Um, but it really needs to be torn out and replaced. Then it's hard to get in these walls because what's happened is you took a single-family home and divided it into four. So there's walls that don't necessarily make sense. Um, you know, so that, you know, electric going from the ground might go over six feet and not from, you know, to avoid one apartment to get up to the next apartment in the upstairs. Um, and frankly, sixty-seven is actually worse. Um, I had a, a pipe burst not very long ago, a couple of months ago in the middle of the night, had to fire, police, everyone there. Um, and they were great. They're fantastic. They helped me repair it. There was one of the volunteer firemen worked at, uh, uh, a pool company and he was able to bring parts and help me get it through until I can get a, a licensed plumber to come in and repair it. He said, you're, you know, your, your pipes are old, they're outdated. Um, there's just, it, it's very difficult. It's not a house that was um, maintained to keep long term, I guess would be my best way to explain it. Um, if you look at it from the basement, dirt floor basement up, um, you know, it's, you can't do anything on the bu, on above the foundation that's existing now. Um, there's obviously issues with some of the siding that should come down. Um, environmentally in there, I'm sure there's lead paint and asbestos. Um, so that would have to come out and be replaced. Um, it's all been legally covered, um, by the previous owners. Um, but you know, they, they, while these are beautiful homes and I, and I, you know, I grew up working on T-Star, worked thirty years from, uh, my ninth grade through college. So I appreciate all the friends here in my house is N.T. Um, I appreciate it. I just don't know of a way to take these properties. If they were a single-family home and someone wanted to do the work on them, you could possibly do it, but you can't do it as a, as a multi-family unit. It just, it doesn't, to me, doesn't make sense and it feels, um, impossible. You know, the, the work is beyond me at this point. Trying to keep it up.
Tom, can you talk about the interior of the small addition on sixty-nine?
Yeah, the, the small addition on, on sixty-nine is a bedroom. I, and, and I'm not sure, Pat, are you positive that that was a school moved? Because if anyone wants to come and if you want to open the siding and look at, that was what they told me was a newer addition. So that may be misleading, but that was what previous owners told me. Um, the windows aren't there, but they're not the same. They're not in the same place. And the height of it looks different to me. So if you look at my house and you looked at the pictures, I can grab my gutter. I can reach my gutter. On that house, even above the foundation, that's still nine, ten feet high. It's, it's not even close to the, the same height. It didn't have the same lines by the, from the roof line. So I don't know. I can't, I can't.
What's on the interior?
The interior is a bedroom.
I know, but what, what, what does it look like?
Oh, it's all sheet rocked over. It's been re, obviously redone. Um, so what's behind the sheet rock? I don't know. Um, but it's just sheet rocked over windows. There's no windows on the end, um, which there was in the picture. So they closed those in. Um, which is possible, but there's no way for me to knock. Um, and there's closets, um, a bedroom. Yeah, I, 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 I don't know. Um,
Thanks, Tom. That's all I wanted to do.
All right. Thank you.
And then, uh, finally, it'll take a week or two to take the two buildings down. There will be construction fencing around the site, so there shouldn't be any, any issue with people walking down the street at all. But otherwise it'll be just like any other construction project in downtown Bethel.
And one more thing, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but the, um, eleven, like adding eighteen additional bedrooms, we're not adding eighteen additional. There's eleven bedrooms now. So it's going from eleven bedrooms to eighteen bedrooms.
Right. Six units to eighteen units, but eleven bedrooms.
No, oh yeah, eighteen units.
Sixteen units, eighteen units, but eleven bedrooms to eight, to eighteen bedrooms. It's not a significant increase of what we would expect for the Prince's traffic. So, but our traffic guy will be here next week.
Before you sit, and before I turn it over to everyone else, um, affordability. Is any of these going to be, um, affordable?
Yes, we submitted an affordability plan with the application. In the TOD, if you have more than five units, you have to provide twenty percent of the units as a fourth. Uh, to eight, to people who make eighty percent of the state median income.
So four of the units?
Yeah.
Cool. Right.
And I think we, we designated the units, um, in that plan, but the plan that I normally submit, we reserve the right to move them around if people didn't cave in accordingly.
Right. They're all equal.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll all be the same.
Yeah, they're not all in one place. And yes, all the units are identical. So somebody can move into one, one more.
I just wanted to ask that one question before I turn it over to everyone else.
Well, I, I'd like to thank you. Great presentation from everybody, all, all the, the architects of the building, the landscape architect, you know, civil engineer. Thank you. Refreshing, considering some of the things that this commission has gone through in the last two, if not three months. Pat, thank you. I remember attended one of your presentations. Most enjoyable and educational. I do have one question, which is when I look at your site plan, and I know you mentioned you, you're considering relocating the electrical charges, stations. And you also have your dumpster at what is the farthest away from all the units. Now, winter's coming. Winter's gonna keep on coming, no matter what anybody else says. Okay. And isn't there a more central location where you could possibly shorten the distance for some of the tenants that you're gonna?
Possibly, but what we have to consider is the removal of materials placed in those dumpsters by the trucks that come in to do that. And the location it's in is the most convenient way to not have trucks backing around the site.
The driveway and you're down the driveway. I understand. But you also mentioned that you can get a very large fire truck in and out and turn it around. So.
Let me have, um, Mark.
I'm not looking for an answer, but I, I want you to consider that.
Yeah. Let me have Mark brief announce a note, talk a little bit about the design considerations that led to that location.
Okay. Mark. Um, I mean, Pete, Pete pretty much, it's, um, answered what, when, you know, the, um, location of the current dumpster right now is what we're trying to make it easy, you know, because the seems a stray shot coming up that driveway and it makes it easier for the garbage company to come in. One could use a side loader, they could back up and leave without having to maneuver to the parking lot because then you have to take consideration that might be people backing out. There might be somebody parking in the driveway and the guy's waiting for somebody to move. So we try to make the most convenient place for the garbage stack, but we could certainly, um, take your comment.
I suggest to you that your priorities should be reversed and your tenants should be priority one, as one is most convenient for them.
I appreciate the comment.
Rather than what's more convenient for the guy driving the big truck.
Totally. We're certainly looking.
That's my only comment. And again, great presentation. Thank you. Well done.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm sure we'll give them a look at all the things.
Dan?
Look at it. We don't make any.
I'm sure.
Um, I originally had, before I saw Pat's, um, presentation on, I, I written, was, were there any building historical issues? I also thank you for, for being, having a complete, really good project and for your very interesting presentations. Um, I, you know, I, I come from a, a family that, you know, a son who renovated in nineteen twenties both, uh, home in Tennessee. So I really understand the whole transgomes and all that. So, you know, I'm, I am concerned, you know, to have those lost in the history of our town. Um, I also thought, you know, the sidewalk was a, a concern which you talked about. Um, it looks to me like the proximity, proximity to Greenwood Avenue on your plan is just looks much uh, closer than it does when you go to pick, um, fill and, and have all the landscape there. So that was a little concern for me. Um, I was wondering where the mail's being dropped off, where, if there are children there and where are they going to be waiting for the bus? Are they going to wait at Greenwood Avenue? Are they coming into the, uh, the area, the parking area? And I know, uh, the architect mentioned that, uh, that the rendering is not exactly accurate. So that was my other issue. Um, and I think there's a special permit for removing fill, but I don't see a lot about that. And I was wondering what, what is that? How, how much is that? And, um, because it's higher and I think it makes it look like you're going to make it lower, more Greenwood Avenue uh, level. So those are my, and then the traffic issue, which you're gonna address next week.
Okay. So let's see, um, while the mailbox interior to the site, probably not where the dumpster is based on the issue of brain's comments, um, but there'll be a, a common mailbox that the post office can put the mail or people can pick it up. Um, if there are kids in the development, um, well, first I point out that with one-bedroom units, the number of children would be very low. But the unusual left school is children in a one-bedroom units. Um, but let's say they're all heartbeat. Um, they will wait at the bottom of the driveway, which is a little bit back from Greenwood Avenue, based on the way Prospect Street comes in. Sorry, I'm making hand gestures and I'm not on camera, so. Um, there, what, what you don't see on the plans that we showed you earlier tonight was, there was a comment from um, Public Works, uh, and, um, the town planner about providing pedestrian access into the site from Greenwood Avenue, which we didn't have on our initial plan. Uh, we picked, we anticipated people just walk up the driveway. But based on that, we're going to add a sidewalk that will likely, and again, we're not committing to anything because it has to be designed and, and shown, that will likely come down the west side of that driveway, right along the property line. And so there'll be space within the site that is not a driveway or a road where kids can wait for the school bus. Um, you know, parents are gonna put him in the car and drive him fifty feet downhill and sit there and wait for them to pull the, this floor to close, it stays like this. Laura's laughing.
That's true.
Um, and I'm sorry, I can't read my handwriting. I guess to your last comment, that's all right.
Fill.
To fill, yeah.
Fill, oh yeah. Um, Mark, can you talk about what the net cut and fill is? So, um, under the regulations, if you're going to have more than a certain amount of estimation in connection with a construction project, you have to apply for a special permit as well. Uh, a thousand yards, I think, is the limit. And, and yes, we've got cut and fill together and, and I think it's on the plan.
Yeah.
Mark, can you answer that?
Yes. Uh, so we showed on the, uh, like the moment, plan the earth with volumes. Uh, there is forty-five hundred yards to cut. And that's three hundred, maybe yards of fills. We have about forty-one hundred yards of excess material that you can come and say. Those are a process.
And that's fundamentally to make the grades match between the two properties. Um, and then the last comment is, yes, I, I asked Laura to say, don't forget my renderings aren't accurate. But what she should have said, and I'm not sure she said very clearly, is the architecture is accurate. That's a hundred percent accurate. But we don't allow the architects to do the civil engineer and the landscape architect's job and show grade elevations and what mature plantings were like. So you have to look at the planting place holders. Um, and the fact that those buildings look like they're on the same elevation, well, they're probably not. They're, they go up a bit. Um, and then also this may be an obvious point. If you show the screening at mature heights, it's hiding the architecture. You won't see the architecture because it will be screened and that defeats the entire purpose of showing your render of the architecture. So that was all I wanted Laura to do was to be clear about what you're looking at, that you can rely on it for the architecture, but everything else is inspiration. Yes.
When I started thirty years ago, we would come up with like a watercolor of what the building, you remember these. When I started thirty years ago, we would come up with like a watercolor of what the building, you remember these. This is a project, and now it's like it gets more and more accurate, which sort of is good and also bad. Um, it's, that building was gonna look much more like that than a watercolor would, but are those the exact Petunias? No, and I don't, I don't know anything about Petunias.
And distant from the road, we'll have to get back and see if it's aligned with the other homes, which I, I think it is, it may be more recent. Yeah. Than the home next to it. Um, so we'll take a look at that.
Are you anticipating any blasting?
We don't think so. If, if, if we do, it'll be in accordance with the Fire Marshal regulations and regulations.
The reason I bring that up is because for three or four projects that we've approved recently. We've also required a condition assessment survey.
Yep.
Of the surrounding neighbors.
That's part of the Fire Marshal code. Before you do any blasting, you have to do a pre-blast survey. So, you know, if we have to do it, then we do it. That, those are the rules. Fire Marshal receives.
Dude. Well, you answered the question. I thought about the sidewalk coming in, and the planner had mentioned that, actually, the Public Works Director. Also, you mentioned if we did determine that was a schoolhouse, he would assist. What would that look like?
Come get it. We'll convey it to the town with a bill of sale, or, or to whatever, you know. Look, I don't know what's involved in picking it up and moving it.
Do you know what the foundation looks like under that part of the building?
That part, you can't access the foundation. Um, the, the rest of the house has, you know, you can walk in the, in the, um, in the crawl space. But that was newer, um, and it had, and I, you know, I'll look and see, because it's not, that, there's a little opening that's. Maybe a foot and a half, I've never crawled through. And because it's, they're dirt floors, so I'd have to kind of, it's, it's probably about three feet off the ground and there's an opening. So I could go through there and look at the walls and see if those are, um. You know, the same stacked stone foundation as the rest of it, or if they're cinder block foundation, which I think it might be. Um, so I'll look at that for you, because I have no way of know, you know, being able to tell if it's the schoolhouse. I, I don't doubt, um, that it could be, it's just, that's, that. Contrast what the owners told me, but they didn't, you know, that's true. They said it was an addition added on, um, for an extra better. To make it a two better. That didn't sound like that was done in the eighteen hundreds, but they didn't tell me, so it could have been.
Uh, Pat, thanks for the presentation. I wish we had a little more teeth where we could make some adjustments, but it's not available to us. Uh, my main question is the total. Area that's going to be green space as a percentage. The problem with the TOD is it destroys green space, and that's my biggest beef. Build concrete, everything that goes in there. I'd like to know what that is. Um, again, you probably don't have it now, but. The overall amount and the. To the property line, I guess there would be on the east side. What's, how close is the building to the neighbor's property?
Um, John, can you, I keep calling you John, because John's sitting right here.
Talking about on the, on, yeah.
Mark, on the east side, what's the difference?
We showed on, we showed your dimensions on the site plan. Um, the building's furthest at the back, the, the closest is at twelve point seven feet plus the minus to the property line.
Twelve.
Yeah, it's a thing, um, the building closes to Greenwood Avenue, it's about, uh, it's under twelve feet to that sideline. And then so the street line back is seen with about twenty-one feet to twenty-six feet. From the street line.
Mark, what's our previous coverage number? I don't have that number.
It's not on the zoning table?
Well, I'm guessing it's primarily the twenty to thirty percent. That's.
Seventeen point one in previous coverage.
That's pretty low.
I think it's pretty low.
Yeah.
And I will make the pitch yet again, that one way you get more green space is to reduce the amount of the.
Or reduce.
I, I think the, the structures that we have are actually really quite small in terms of actual spray. That's all I got.
Do you like Nard?
Uh, I, I. It's a very good plan, if you take the historical business out of it. But, and that's hard to do for the owner, from the standpoint of, I, I owned the house downtown one time on the Elizabeth Street. And I, I probably encountered as much. Financial grief as, as anything else. It's a labor of love if you try and save an old house downtown. Uh, it definitely is, it's a financial labor of love. Because we ran into situations where the porch would run right, right off the house when we bought it. And people said the easiest way was just to rip the porch off the house, if they have no porch on the house at all. Just have steps one up into the house. And we wanted to keep a look, so we kept a look of, of, you know, a wraparound porch. That got you in the front door and then got you in the side door. We had all the plumbing problems, the, the electrical problems. Uh, it had the knob and tooth wiring in the basement. We had tenants who would hang the, the clothing on the knob and tooth, so we had to take that all out. So, you know, it, it, it's, it's not easy owning an old, an old house and trying to make it be a profit center. And we don't, we, we, we don't deal with that as plaintiffs only, whether the guy makes profit or not. But we try and make the regulations and the TOD regulations or whatever regulations we have. Easy enough for the developer to use where he gets a bonus out of it a little bit. And he keeps the old house. They've determined that owners and developers of this, that's not feasible. What do we do about that? I don't have the answer, nobody has the answer. Thank you.
Thank Bob. Um, on to me, I have a few questions and suggestions. I think you guys touched on a few of them. Um. The existing rock wall along, along Prospect that you're trying to keep.
Mm-hmm.
The grade of the, of the ground when you're done, is it gonna follow that wall all the way back, or is it gonna dip down?
Mark, I can explain it. Uh, right now, we're not, we're not touching, if you look on the site development plan. Um, grading is actually such that, uh. And we tried to avoid any excavation in earthwork in that area in order to preserve that wall. Um, the only activity really in that area is the landscaping at Abigail, as the show. Um, it's, as we talked about earlier, putting a sidewalk on top of that wall certainly affects everything.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
I was just trying to envision, because you're gonna have, you're gonna have a retaining wall on the east side, correct?
Right.
How tall is that retaining wall going to be?
Well, they vary anywhere from four to ten feet, depending on, if we're looking into making some adjustments to.
And is that retaining wall gonna run all the way to Prospect?
No.
So it's gonna cater off?
Yeah, it's not short, uh, it's not, it's about, uh. I remember here, it is probably about twelve feet back from that existing retaining wall.
So it's gonna kind of keep the existing grading.
Yes.
To about twelve feet back.
Yeah, and then we start doing, you know, that's creating an adjustment grade from there.
Okay. Um, I would, I think, uh, Peter brought it up, about the sidewalk. I would agree, no, I'm sorry, I would agree, um. I, I like the idea of bringing it up to the stop sign. Um, uh, I forget who made the comment about, like, almost like a bike lane or like a painted line on Prospect, and I'm sure. Um, I'm sure someone in the town, we could, we could work with them and, and get something like that, because. I mean, I've lived in town almost my entire life, and that's always how it's been, there's sidewalk on the other side of Prospect, there's sidewalk on this side, and everybody just walks over the hump.
Yep.
Um. So, you know, if we were able to at least paint one side of it, just to give, you know, pedestrians a little bit of safe haven. Um, you know, it's, I obviously recognize it's not practical to put a sidewalk there over Prospect. I would also encourage, and I think you brought it up already, you're gonna have a sidewalk into your complex. Um, one of the big things about TOD is, is walkability, so, I mean, let's, you're, you're right there at the, at the nine yard line. At the bottom of the driveway, let's have it come up at least to the, um, at least into the, into the complex. Um, I do disagree, Spruell, with you. I don't think dumpster is a bad spot. Um, for the few years that I did not live in Bethel, I did live in a apartment complex. Uh, and the dumpster was in the back corner, and it wasn't that bad, a big of a deal for me to carry my garbage. Uh, and frankly, if it's in the middle of everything, you're gonna hear the dumpster opening, closing at all hours. Um, so I'm of the thought, let's get it away from, from everybody. Uh, it's gonna be in that enclosure that now we require. Um, anytime you give the, the garbage truck in and out of the complex as early, as quick as possible. With the least amount of maneuvering and hearing the back of alarm at four o'clock in the morning, I'm in favor of. Um, I think it's a good plan. Uh, I thank Wild for your presentation. I think all of you, your presentations are very informative, very. Clean, very easy to, to understand all the way around. Um, and I'm torn because, again, growing up in Bethel my entire life, I've always driven by seeing the P P Barnum House. And, and didn't know the significance of, uh, these homes, and you wouldn't know, because there's, you know. There's nothing, no one teaching that around town. Um, that being said, you have to, you have to realize there's been two hundred and some odd years of. Uh, maintenance in these homes, and it could be suspect. Um, so, you know, you're coming in and trying to get to it. Uh, and I hate to say it, sometimes a, a old home might not be in the best shape, and it gets too, too far gone. It's too far gone, is what it is. Um, I am encouraged by hearing you guys saying your willingness to at least. Give stuff away, whether that's in town, um, you know, the steps, who knows? Uh, that, I mean, seriously though, and that's, that's, that's cool stuff, that, that, you know. At, at least shouldn't just end up down at, at, uh, the transfer station over on White Street in Danbury.
Um, I would find out that Mr. Wild wrote an excellent book that has many great pictures that we decided to use tonight. So I would commend that if you want to learn more.
I will, I will. Thank you. Um, I had the, uh, forty-one hundred yards, my quick Bethel High School math, that's about two hundred triaxles coming off site.
That's a big there, but.
Twenty yards, triaxle. Go up with two hundred and five trucks.
Yeah.
Um. I think that's it for now, it's a, it's a good plan. I'd like to see more of your guys, obviously you guys are massaging some stuff. Um, we'll see you next meeting, we're, we're.
We would like to come back December ninth.
Okay.
Um, that, that'll give us time to submit a set of plans, have it reviewed, get comments back, and maybe revise one more time before we see it again, but.
Okay.
December ninth. The twenty-fifth, we'd like to come back December ninth.
All right, so you want to continue to, to December ninth?
Correct.
I will not leave. That'll be the new commission.
Oh, who aren't here?
So it goes when you submit applications.
It is what it is. Uh, for the record, um, I have, uh, we're waiting for the final recounts to come out, but. Uh, as the chair, I've reached out to a couple of the new members, encouraged them to attend our meetings and start watching the videos, get up to speed. Um, and they will be invited personally to the next meeting. But anyways, uh, we will continue this public hearing, uh, to our regular scheduled meeting on December ninth.
Do you, before that, do you want the commission and the new people to be able to walk the property?
Uh, do you feel like you need to?
I'm just asking for the new people that are coming on board.
I don't feel like I need a sidewalk, whether I was gonna be here on the ninth or not, if you feel like you want.
I'm not gonna be here.
So. Yeah, so.
Mary's used to own it.
Bob, Spruell and Kenny are both agreeing, they don't feel like they need a sidewalk. What's your feeling on that?
Mr. Chairman, do you, do you, is it, uh, you should perhaps also pull the board if the new members may also find it appropriate to have a sidewalk.
Well, the new members.
We can still decide that at a later date.
Okay. You can also convey our invitation to the new members to park on Greenwood Avenue and have a walk.
Take a walk.
Yeah, just, just have David email us that they're gonna be there.
Staff would be happy to support it.
So you're gonna give an extension now?
We're doing an extension to get them to December ninth.
Yeah.
This is day one.
Well, December ninth, that's too late to, it's like, okay, no.
What I'm saying is, they can just go.
He's gonna, we're gonna reach out to the new members who are coming on, and they can coordinate through David, through Peter. To walk the site if they feel necessary.
If, if I may clarify the time briefly, the public hearing for this application is opening tonight. You have sixty-five days, is, is it, is it thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
Okay, you have thirty-five days as part of your review period.
Yeah.
To conduct that public hearing.
Yeah.
Um, getting you to the December ninth meeting, you would, you would have enough time, just enough time. To get you to.
So.
Then to that public hearing.
Pending, pending notice disasters or any unforeseen things that pop up. Um, again.
So a decision needs to be made by one?
No, no, no.
Okay, it just has to be closed.
Right. It, it doesn't even need to.
And if, and if there's something drastic that we, that the commission feels, we could always ask the applicant for, uh, extension at that point, but that would be a decision. Be made on the ninth.
And you would have sixty-five days of extension time if you need.
Yes, if needed.
And my suggestion on the sidewalk was you didn't need to have an actual meeting. To have people go walk to the property. They can't go more than three of them at a time.
Right.
But just let us know if they want to go and. Park in Greenwood Avenue and walk in, kind of give you.
Excellent.
Sounds like it's a huge property that needs. Guides.
December ninth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move into item three B. Uh, One Millwood Drive LLC at seventy-two Reservoir Street. Uh, eight thirty G site plan review. This was an application that the board denied me. They have used their means to come in with, um. Adjustments, if you will, and readdress some of the reasons of denial. I am recused from this application. Uh, Spruell's gonna take over for you.
No, I'm talking.
Nobody signed up?
We have the, we have the sign-in sheet here for anyone else who may also want to offer public comment on this.
Here, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and November seventh, twenty twenty-five, public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on November tenth, twenty twenty-five, in meeting room D of the municipal center, One School Street. Connecticut at seven PM to hear the following. One Millwood Drive LLC for an eight dash thirty G affordable housing site plan on property located at seventy-two. Reservoir Street with three two-family dwellings consisting of six two, two-bedroom units. The property can be found in the assessor's records at map oh eight. Dash block twenty-three dash lot oh three, and map oh eight. Dash block twenty-three dash lot, lot oh three dash one. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via, via regular mail and email to landuse@bethel-CT.gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building. Michael Kozlowski, Vice Chair.
All right, as, as it was stated, this application was denied. And it's now not been appealed. But it's been resubmitted. So with that, I'd like to open it to the public for any comments. If you could come up and state your name.
Scott Murphy, seventy-four Reservoir Street. Um, I haven't had a chance to look online at what he has brought back to the board. Um. I know there were questions the last time, I don't feel were answered. Uh, one being who owns the property on Millwood Drive. Uh, the blasting situation, we asked how the new blasting was going. Uh, the blasting situation, we asked how the new blasting was going to work. Um, we never actually got an answer, and they're going to blow up rocks. Uh, the snow removal was an issue. The line of sight was an issue. And, and I understand the engineer saying that, well, it meets certain requirements. Certain requirements are generic, in my opinion. They're guidelines. They don't fit every single means. Um, that road, and I didn't realize it, so I was looking at a picture that my, one of my family members took. Pat can probably date it. It's black and white. The road coming up that hill actually curves a little bit. I know Pat drives it every day. I see the black car with the wild plate. But it actually does have a curve as you're going up that hill. And it is blind until you get almost to my driveway. You cannot see anything that's at the bottom of that hill. It's there almost to the driveway of seventy-four Reservoir Street. And I've seen the people come up that road at well over forty miles an hour. And if you're coming out of Millwood, especially with a building in the way now, you're not going to see that car until it's too late. And I myself, I leave work early because I work, um, in Brewster. And all that west side traffic, Reservoir Street is a throughway for all that west side traffic. I'll sit in my driveway, watch fifteen, twenty cars go by before I can even get out. Traffic study was never done. So I don't feel any questions that we had were answered. But that's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Hey, David?
Yes.
Can you go over the new proposal, the changes?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to, it's not my place to speak for the applicant and what they have submitted.
Are they here?
Uh, the applicant does not appear to be with us here, either in person or online tonight. They were notified that tonight's hearing will be taking place and that this, that this item was scheduled. I, I, I will say, um, um, Mr. Carley, the town's interim town planner will be joining us, uh, shortly and, um, he just, he just popped on and, uh, the town, uh, your commission's counsel, uh, attorney Andrews was also on. Uh, if you guys have any questions, uh, for him, um, you know, regarding the contents of this application, we'll be expecting the decision you under for the, uh, eight thirty G application.
Hey, Sproul?
Yes, sir.
You'd like to stick to the jury?
Please.
Jeremy, could you just make a quick review of what changes they submitted?
Uh, yeah, I mean, very briefly, they've, um, they've made some adjustments to the sightline calculations that were on the plan. Um, I think they addressed the location of snow storage. I don't have the plan open in front of me, but those are the two main things. Um, you know, there's, there's some commentary in there about, um, the right to access Millwood Drive from their property and we're still going back and forth with the town's, uh, town's attorney on that. I think that can be addressed as a condition of approval if the commission moves to approve, but the, the big issue there was the sightline. Um, S L R has given you some comments as of last Friday. I don't know if those made it onto the website today or not for your review, uh, but they have been forwarded over to the applicant. Um, uh, and so we're, we're sort of in a holding pattern until we've got some responses with regard to that.
So I, I have a question here and perhaps, uh, Attorney Andrews would be best to answer this. In terms of a procedural requirement, um, I don't believe that is up to any staff, downstaffed, nor to any commissioner to represent the applicant. And as such, since the applicant is not present, I don't see how we can be discussing any of these items pertaining to traffic study, the line of sight, the snow removal and snow storage to avoid flooding across the street and the blasting. It, it's not up to us to justify this project.
No, I, I think you should table the hearing because the applicant's not there and so they're not afforded the due process, right? Um, we shouldn't be taking public comment and we should table the hearing to the next meeting when they're here.
I need your name and address.
Maureen Hussain, seventy-three Reservoir Street. Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be at the first meeting. Um, I have significant concerns. My first concern is that the applicant isn't here and can't be bothered to show up. It should be denied. If you can't be bothered to show up and address the concerns that the committee already brought forward, as did others, why are we tabling the issue? I, I have been sitting here since seven o'clock. School teacher, I've got stuff to do. I don't think it's right. Um, I have significant concerns with the blasting. How does that affect my property that's on Bedrock? Um, the amount of traffic on reservoir is, is significant. I mean, last night I thought about calling the cops because somebody was doing probably about seventy miles per hour drag racing up and down the, the road. Um, there has been, uh, an accident where somebody hit my tree and then crashed into my mailbox because of the line of sight. It is, it is significant. Um, prior to me buying my house, the driveway was moved because it was too close to my neighbors. I think it might have been across.
It was directly. Between the pine trees in your house.
Yes, yeah. Um, so I, I'm very concerned about it being the, 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 um, blasting because my, my house is eighteen eighty, something to that effect. Um, and I, most, most upsetting is that the applicant isn't here. You're so busy wanting this application to be approved. You can't be bothered to show up.
And as I've stated for the record, this application was denied. It was a unanimous decision of this commission to deny this application. The, the applicant has resubmitted, as you correctly stated, hasn't been able to come here tonight, even though they were given due notice to represent what changes they have made. And as such, based on council's advice, we're, we're going to stop this discussion.
Right, uh, Chuck Andrews, I, I think it's, it is appropriate to continue the public hearing. I think Chair, Jeremy did, uh, acknowledge that there were some new staff comments that came in late. Um, I, I think last Friday, some engineering, so I, I don't know if the applicant thought that this was to be continued till we could address it. There's no problem if, if there's additional public comment for, you know, because it was notices, public hearing, public, if you want to allow public comment and actually the applicant had a chance to listen to that and address that at the hearing. But, um, but, but you should, definitely, I agree, you should continue, continue the hearing. And recall, this is an eight thirty G application and you do have the burden of proof in the event, uh, you deny the application and there's an appeal. We've gone through that many times of showing a substantial public safety issue in public health, in, in safety that outweighs the need of affordable housing and cannot be addressed by reasonable conditions. So with that, yeah, I think it probably makes sense to, uh, continue the public hearing.
Sproul, Sproul, I have a question to Chuck.
Certainly.
Chuck, uh, do we, we would include all the testimony from the previous public hearing as part of this application, I would believe.
Yes, that's correct.
Those, so therefore, any, anything that was not answered in that public hearing, that we thought was, should have been answered in that public hearing, needs to be answered as we keep the public hearing open.
That, that's correct. And I believe the town attorney has also submitted some, some recent additional comments in response to some of the comments from Mr. Marcus. So, so, um, yes, the, that, that was, um, that, that's correct.
Uh, uh, I mean, I appreciate the people sitting there, you know, waiting for this to come up, uh, but uh, it didn't come up because of the applicant not being there. Uh, I, I, I think we could continue to hear, you know, if, if the people want to keep talking and giving their opinion of, of what it is, uh, they will still have the chance to answer that later on.
That's correct.
Chuck, would, would we be able to, um, hire our own traffic, uh, study the, the, uh, Bethel rather than just depending upon theirs with the accidents? I think I had asked for the accident reports and they didn't get it or whatever. Um, and, um, you know, to see, you know, how fast are people going on there? What's going on with the traffic backup and, um, all that? I mean, I know that, that can't, unless it's a safety issue, it can't be a reason for denial. But if it's a safety um, line of sight and, you know, the traffic, I don't know. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, that certainly, you have the, uh, opportunity to have your own experts review, uh, any of the data. I believe Jeremy, I think you indicated that you had asked S L R traffic persons to look at this. So there should be some, uh, additional information that you perhaps didn't consider the last time.
Yeah, that's right. We got some comments from S L R regarding the sightline issues. Um, police commission has taken a look at it again and I believe they responded today. We, we're waiting for something in writing from them. They have no concerns or no comments at this time, uh, but we did ask, we did ask S L R's traffic group to look at that intersection. Um, and they made some recommendations, uh, to the commission ultimately, but, but to the applicant, um, for, for a few, um, uh, things to consider. I'll pull it up so that I can reference that.
Can you tell me where the, the entrance to these units would be? Would it be on reservoir or would it be on Millwood?
Sproul, we're just going to ask.
That's still online.
Yeah, so I, I'd like to entertain a motion here to, uh,
Make a motion that we continue.
And, and there's still a question of, uh, if I, if I may, of, uh, the ownership of the property. So I don't want to get into any of that today. We've all spent enough time. This is the second merry-go-round that we take on this. And, uh, we are all investing time.
Yes.
Alright.
Yes.
In our, at heart and at mind. So there is a motion to table this.
To continue the public.
Right, twenty-fifth, excuse me. Thank you. Do we have any time limitations? Do we have to take it on the twenty-fifth? Can we move it to the ninth?
In, you, you're, you're supposed to render a decision within sixty-five days after it's submitted. I haven't done, I don't have the calendar in front of me and I don't know if, uh, Dave or Jeremy have done that map.
I have.
But we did render a decision, we denied it, so this is a resubmit.
For the modification.
Does, does the clock start again on the resubmit?
Yes, you have sixty-five days from their resubmission date. I put it in the staff report. You should have the dates written, if, if you have the report there. Um, uh, uh, but I believe you have to have a decision rendered by your December ninth meeting.
Okay, then, uh.
So we're going to do the twenty-fifth, we're going to do the ninth.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Alright, Bob, your vote on this?
I'm going with the twenty-fifth, yeah.
I am?
Yes.
And I'll go with the twenty-fifth.
You want me to go get applause?
Yeah, you're done with this.
November twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Seven P M.
Two days before, two days before, uh, Thanksgiving. Two days.
Two days before.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Alright, we'll move into. Hey Chuck, how are you?
I, I'm, I'm just fine. Should I stick around or are you, or am I done for the evening?
I think, I think you are free to step away, uh, Attorney Andrews. Thank you very much for joining.
Okay, thank, thank you everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Right, bye-bye.
Uh, we'll move into, uh, item number four A, the minutes. Under our business meeting, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last meeting?
Yeah.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Additions?
Punctuation, issues? Nothing?
Um, we're supposed to tell them ahead of time if we have anything, right?
It's, it would, it's helpful, keep the flow of the meeting going, but if you find something last minute, I'm not going to tell you not to.
I, I just, under Beth's, um, or non-punctual road, there was a little, some more addition that couldn't have been added to there. Just the time, the timeframe that she was talking about and.
It's all on the video.
I know it's on the video, but it's not here, so.
No, no, this is, uh.
Well, it's just, I, you know, I, I just thought, you know, for the future, she's saying that it would take probably a year to, to plan this stuff, so, um, just to give people a timeline, we didn't say anything about that.
Uh, for the record, I did watch the video on the last meeting. Alright. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. We have an invoice for six hundred and sixty dollars and seventy cents for illegal noticing in the news times. Uh, I will make a motion to pay that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That motion passes. We have the public input portion tonight. Has anyone here in the public want to make any general comments?
So just generally is not.
Nothing specific to any.
Targeted to any.
Cam, Moynton, Diamond Avenue. Um, I just went going through the working draft of the new housing bill that got vetoed and you guys should really take a look at it and read, um, just, this one is sixty-one, sixty-nine, Strong's comments on it. A lot of the things in this draft, if they're passed, go into effect in January. So, things that will impact decisions that, that Bethel's going to make.
Thank you, Ms. Moyn. Uh, for the record, our, um, town planner, um, has already emailed the commission that, it was today or yesterday?
That was correct.
Um, emailed it out to us, uh, to start reviewing on our own. Um, and, uh, he has told us, once he gets through it, he will let us know his thoughts and, I don't know, so we are aware of it as a commission.
So. It's, it's not exactly a page turner.
No.
Ninety-nine pages.
Yeah, I, I thumbed through it very quickly today and, uh,
You did a lot of laundry.
No, and I, I spent a, a, no more than a few minutes just kind of scrolling through my phone, just reading some bullet points, like, wow, wow. So I need to, yeah, yeah. Uh, anyways, any other public input? Anyone online? None?
I just.
Wild, yes, sir.
I want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you, whether you're returning or not, for the work that you do. Because it's, it's not easy. You guys are faced with a lot of tough questions. And I know you put a lot of time, you put a lot of effort and it, it takes its toll. So again, I want to make sure, you know, at least one, one person in the town, uh, boys and girls appreciate you for what you do. Dave and Amanda, I want to thank you both for helping me do what was necessary to keep my presentation for that as well, so.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
If P T Barnum was buried there, we might have been able to save.
Let's not talk about an open, let's not talk about an open public hearing.
Anybody online?
Anyone online?
History, just history.
Just general Bethel history.
Uh, I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Jeremy, planner's report.
Uh, yeah, I was, I'll defer to my written report, um, for most of it. I sent you all information on where we are with the moratorium. I've had some additional conversations with our town's legal counsel. We continue to, um, try to get, uh, the certifications in, the, um, compliance certifications. We're working on those. We've got one back, which is good. Um, that's really the big nut to crack at this point. You know, it's something that needs to happen annually. Um, hasn't, I think, happened on a regular basis. Uh, I know it was done a couple of years ago. We need to catch up and, and get those done again for twenty twenty-four and then coming up in January, get them for twenty twenty-five. So, um, you know, it's just all part of the process. We continue to, to work on that. But that's the big chunk is the, is the compliance certificates. With regard to the H B five thousand two replacement, that's the housing bill, um, we're going through it. There's a lot of carrots in this version and fewer sticks, so I think from a town's perspective, that's a good thing. Uh, the one. Uh, the one thing that I did note is that it requires a housing growth plan. I think either on an every five or ten year basis going forward. Um, and I, I think that takes the place of the affordable housing plans that you had to write a few years ago and those were going to be every five-year plans. So once we get a chance to digest it, kind of figure out what it all is going to mean for Bethel, we'll, we'll give you a report. The big thing with the housing growth plan, and it's a couple of years out from when they need to actually be adopted. Um, so by then your moratorium application should be in, but towns that do not undertake a housing growth plan and adopt it become ineligible for eight thirty G moratorium. So it's just something for us to keep our eyes on. We're, we're going to be out ahead of that. We don't have to worry about it, but just something to, to keep, to keep an eye on. But I think most of it's carrots instead of sticks this time, but we'll, we'll digest it and get back to.
Yeah, is it in, historically Bethel's been very, um, forward with, with being on top of that sort of stuff.
You have.
A lot of other work.
Yeah, you have, you, you know, you, you're at five and a half percent or so of affordable. Your zoning is, is very flexible in a lot of ways, especially up on, on Route Six and in the town center area. So you are ahead of the curve in a lot of ways, which is great. You've done, you've done a lot of the legwork and, and I applaud you on that. So we're just going to keep moving forward with that.
Excellent. Uh, commission comments, start with you, Mr. Lennard.
Uh, I've got nothing. Motion to adjourn.
No, no, yeah.
Hi, um, Jeremy, how many H U E points do we have to have to meet the moratorium?
It's, it's on the spreadsheet, Diane. I don't have it in front of me. It's two percent of your housing stock as of twenty twenty census.
This is, okay.
It's like, I think it's like a hundred and fifty-nine points, somewhere in that.
Eight-six. And we have one hundred and ninety-one?
Potentially.
You have a hundred and ninety-one if we can get compliance certificates on all of them, yes.
All right.
I was wondering about the historical, historical district, um, or whatever it is to try and protect things. I asked Beth about that probably when I first got on board. We don't actually have an actual historical district, right? Or we don't have whatever protections that you could possibly have that they may still ignore, but maybe less likely to not found things? I don't know. I mean, he was, Patrick had brought up that, um, historic district. Actually, Peter also, historic district, historic district commission. I know Dan's not here now, but.
That'd be a Board of Selectment function. They would need to adopt a, an historic district and then set up a commission.
So we would have to go to the Board of Select meeting and ask them that they would be willing to do that.
Right, it would be done through the code of ordinances, correct? Yep.
Okay. I may or may not be here. Probably won't be.
Back to the recount. I can tell you I will not.
I'm probably not, so, well, you're definitely on a different board, so.
You abandoned us.
Sorry. Oh, oh.
So, uh, Jeremy, thank you for putting the spreadsheet together. It's very, very helpful, easy to follow, understand where we are, uh, especially with the compliance cert. And, um, I imagine that as you get a, a compliance documented, that then you will update this spreadsheet.
Yep.
And then the other item is, uh, I'm in the bad habit of sending you these emails the day of the meeting. I send you an email about the software application that I think would be of interest to you. Amanda, where you just set it down and it transcribes the verbal part of a meeting into a text form, which in the form of meeting minutes. Not an actual transcription of every word that's said, but it has this artificial intelligence capability of summarizing it and putting in there. And I would like to.
Gentlemen?
Uh, it was another one that I passed on to, uh, to Jeremy today. And he came back with yet a third one that he has heard of. So I, I think this would be something useful, not only for this commission, but for every commission or board that's in the town.
So, so what I had mentioned, Spruul, was that we currently use Gemini as part of Google meets, which is, you know, what I'm interacting with you on right now. And Gemini does that. At the end of each meeting, the staff all gets an email with, um, with a meeting summary. Um, and so I, you know, as I mentioned, I think it's always worth, uh, certainly we're always willing to try new technologies and see what's better. Uh, but we, we currently are doing that, just so, just so you all are aware.
I also get it, uh, with the, um, planning zoning chair email. So after this meeting, when I get home tonight, I'll forward it to you. And you can see exactly what, what I get, I can forward it, we forward it to the whole board.
Yeah, let's forward it to.
Yeah, forward it to the whole board.
That way.
I thi- I think it's exactly what you're asking for.
Yeah, I think it alleviates a burden on you, but if you're already using it, then.
Yeah, but I don't have to write word for word.
No, but this does it for you.
Correct.
No, but I know that I won't use that for my minutes.
No, this does the minutes. It wasn't.
No, no, it's not, it's not, it's not the minutes. It's, I'll show it, Spruul, I'll forward it to you tonight.
Okay, so the one that I sent Jeremy is specifically tailored to create meeting minutes, not a transcription of the meeting, it's meeting minutes.
Gotcha.
I suspect it's pretty similar to what Gemini does. I think the big difference between the different technologies is the accuracies. And so that's what I mean. I, I, you know, I think it's, if it's a, if, if there's a free trial that we can sign up for and, and give it a whirl and see how it does, I think it's worth finding out. I've noticed that Gemini sometimes has some errors in terms of who opened the meeting and, uh, you know, gets some of the names wrong just because of who actually opens the, the software versus who's running the actual meeting. And so we can try the, the other software programs if they're free. I don't see a problem with that at all.
If I could also, I'd like to send some of this briefly, Mr. Chuck. In one of my past lives, I was also a recording secretary. I, I, to, to speak to some of what Amanda does, um, you can have Gemini or, or, or some recording software kind of give you a brief summary like we've all described it, but it actually takes somebody to, with the wherewithal for how the meeting, with how the meeting's conducted, to actually organize all the items and actually have all the motions and votes recorded adequately. Because that's the most important part, right? A, a, as, as far as, you know, what, uh, dialogue takes place. Um, I, I, I will, I will go back to a phrase that I have used, uh, for heated discussions in the past. Discussion ensued. A, a, and, and if, if you really want to get down to brass tacks for what minutes needs, it's who made the motion and who made the vote. But that, those are really the two most important things. E, e- everything else, it, it's, yeah, the, the secretary can take some nuance for how that's written, but, uh, Amanda does good work for trying to capture that and, and keep things succinct. And if there is a, um, uh, something that comes up where someone wants further clarification, you always have the.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Which does a lot better job of, you know, just being able to capture what, what someone says and, and the presentations that are made, because you can't capture that, right? But, but Amanda does good work with her minutes.
I would agree.
I think.
That's a wrong interpretation. That's not where I was going with it. I was trying to give you a tool that apparently is being used unbeknownst to me to make your life simpler.
All day they were using that at the doctor's office and then the next time I went, they weren't using it. So I'm not sure whether they just didn't think it was working great or what.
Or their free trial. All right, I'll just.
One more.
Go ahead.
TOD. Where are we? What's the schedule? Who's delivering what, when?
Give me, I'll answer that at the end of my comments, because I'm going to finish it with a bang. All right, is it, is it all right with you, Spruul?
Absolutely.
Um, first thing I will start with, because we were talking about the minutes, I think, Amanda, thank you. I think your minutes are way, way better than the last reporting secretary. Don't kidding, Nancy, just kidding. Uh, in all seriousness, I've always looked at minutes as the, um, table of content. They get you to where you need to go. Uh, if you want to go into more detail, that'll tell you where to go and go to the recording. Right? Uh, it, it has the important information, the votes, the motions. Other than that, anything more, you go to the recording, that's why they're recording. So thank you, Amanda. I know it's a tough job. I couldn't do it. Uh, secondly, um, next week, we have a not actually busy meeting, but an important meeting, so I'm going to implore everyone to try to make it.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, I'm sorry, two weeks, next meeting, I'm sorry, I apologize, two weeks. We're, Jeremy, can I touch on the, um, executive session that we talked about?
Yeah, I think you can, I think you can mention that we're going to, that we're going to schedule one for that meeting, yes.
So we're just going to do an executive session. Once the recount is done and we're finalized and we know exactly who the new members of the board are going to be, uh, I as the chair plan on reaching out personally to them, inviting them to an executive session, uh, next meeting. Sorry, executive session is not open to the public. Just to catch those new members up. Um, we have an application that was recently denied by the board, um, which has, uh, they have appealed to the courts. And I'd like to have an open discussion among the board members, uh, some staff and the incoming board members to catch them up. Because the, I feel like the outgoing board members should be able to give some last comments and the incoming board members should be able to have those comments on board, because they're the ones that are going to have to vote on this. Um, so that's, that's in the works. I've already talked to Jeremy a little bit about that and it's funny, him and I talked today and we're both thinking the same exact thing, uh, without even chatting, so we're on the same page. Spruul, the TOD talk change proposals. Uh, if you remember, the first step was we had that zone change. We have the, any zone changes that have to be done need to be done with a official map. And that's why the first one we had to throw it out, restart. So next public hearing, or next meeting on the twenty-fifth, the, we're going to open the public hearing where the commission initiated, uh, text amendment, which, uh, will remove that requirement to have the, the, um, surveyed, official surveyed map to then do a zone change. That's the first step. Once we get that approved, uh, and changed and that change is unofficial, then the board can move forward with the, uh, changes that were proposed earlier this year to the TOD. So, and basically pick up where we left off. All the, uh, testimony that was taken, uh, was it June? We had that meeting, July? When we ever had the meeting?
August, yeah.
Yeah. August, all that testimony, um, is obviously been reported. We were all sitting there. That can be added to the public record for the new, uh, proposal. It's really just, um, straightening out the paperwork at this point. And like anything that happens in P and Z, it takes months to get it done correctly. So, uh, back to that, and here comes the big bang. I'll make a motion to adjourn. All right, have a good night, everyone, see you in two weeks.